I will now call to order the August 8th, 2024 Lewisville Planning Commission meeting with a roll call, please.
Krishna Mahaly.
Present.
Krishna Hunt.
Here.
Krishna Baskett.
Here.
Krishna Troy.
Here.
Krishna Bangs.
Here.
Krishna Moline.
Here.
Chair Brownice.
Here. Thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please.
Move on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion key.
Aye.
Great. Then we were looking at some back minutes here, looking at March, April, and May. I will do each of them separately, and then if you remember which ones you are not at, if you'll point out that you're abstaining. So, motion to approve the March minutes?
I'll move approval of the March minutes.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. A motion to approve the April minutes.
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And motion to approve the May minutes.
I'll move approval of the May minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I abstained because I was not at the May meeting.
Thank you. And then, do we have anybody online that might want to speak to public comment? This is open public comment for items not on the agenda time?
There was one attendee with their hand up.
Okay, we might have an attendee with their hand up?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, mine.
All right, thanks, appreciate that. Then we'll move into our first item of new business, which is a request to re-notice.
There's no action needed from the planning commission on this one. It's a notice.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
No, we can't, we can't. No, no questions, not loud. All right, thank you very much. Then we will move into our discussion of the comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir. And is Allison here? Yeah, so I'll briefly sort of tee this item up. This will actually be your own comprehensive document, but you being the head of the development one-on-one person in this sync for today, so we're going to just sort of do that. But the purpose of this item is sort of part of your standard in comprehensive plan update, but specific action being requested by the planning commission tonight is for affirmation of vision statement and core values. So if you recall, a couple months ago, you brought to you sort of a preview or an initial draft.
Yep. Sorry, Jeff, we're not getting audio here, online, there's no audio coming through.
Yeah, the...
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, I think you're...
For you, your microphone. That new fancy wireless microphone.
I thought it was just my ears.
Ah, help from behind, nice.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, got a good green light on that one.
Sure enough, is that, is that on?
Yeah, it's much better.
Okay, all right, sorry you had to come down for that, should've figured that out. Okay, so I'll do a quick recap, so...
Thank you.
So the purpose of this item is as part of our sort of monthly standing update of the comprehensive plan to Planning Commission, but the specific action being requested of Planning Commission tonight is for affirmation of the draft vision statement and core values. And the reason for us asking for affirmation of these is because, you know, this is a really critical piece of the plan and its development, and really the foundational piece where everything's going to sort of pivot off of it. And so, over the last month or so, we've been conducting focused community engagement around these vision and value statements and sort of getting a sense of what these really subjective words mean to people. So I'm going to turn it over to Allison here momentarily to walk us through that, she's going to do the heavy lifting, but just wanted to reiterate, you know, this is a really important part of the process, and, and, you know, you'll see as the plan evolves and develops how this becomes the lens for the policies that are in there, the goals, the future land use map, really everything hinges off of it, so it's an important step in the process. And then we'll be going, last thing I'll say is we'll be going to city council on September 3rd, I believe, for their affirmation, as we're calling it, of these as well, so it's essentially a recommendation. So however you want to do it, voice vote, I'll leave it up to you, so.
Okay.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Allison if you're set up and ready to walk us through the evening.
Yep, hello everyone, good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, and can you see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent, well, it's great to be back with you all, our last meeting was all the way back in March, so we're excited to share some updates with all of you, and as Jeff said, really spend a little time and discussion around these vision and values. So, we're going to share a little bit on community engagement, in the sense that this is really what has informed the vision and values, I will spend some time in discussion on what those are, and then we'll finish up with a what's on the docket now that we get these vision and values as our framework, where do we go from here? So, we'll have about 20 minutes of presentation, and then we're really excited to share this all with you. Just as a reminder, we know you've seen this before, but just keeping in mind with this framework today that a comprehensive plan is a guiding document, and it's really meant as a tool to help you as the planning commission in decision-making for future development applications that come through. And so, once again, we always start with the end in mind, and we keep these slides up front so that we keep coming back to what we need to do to achieve success in this project. And today, we're going to share more about how we're organizing a clear plan, really gathering and listening to input from the community, and using that to drive outcomes for integrating revitalization, sustainability, and resilience into this comprehensive plan. And just to give you an update on progress, we have used this past summer to really dig into the vision and core values, as Jeff mentioned, huge props to your City of Lewisville staff who have really gone out and put the extra effort into listening and engaging with the community, we're so grateful for them, and the time and commitment they've put to having some community conversations this past summer. That has really been formative for these core values, and that's going to inform these community choices and priorities, and this is part of scenarios and trade-offs that will be a workshop coming in October, we'll share more about that with you later. But we're really finishing up this future framework phase, and starting to move into more of the tangible actions of the plan. So, quick update on what we've been doing, just a reminder since it has been a little bit, in our last conversation, we shared an in-depth understanding and engagement outreach, we reviewed different plans, we had these focus groups with 11 different topical conversations, we dug deep into issues and opportunities in these existing conditions memorandum, and we developed kind of this overall project branding. So this has been really formative for a lot of the questions, as well as some of the scenarios and values, we're really building off this information as kind of our starting point, as we have moved into the next phases of work. I believe this was shared with you in the last conversation, but we're going to quickly touch on some of the community engagement summary, this was back in March, just before survey went live, back in March, kind of right around the time of our last conversation, and it was hugely successful, almost 2,000 responses to the survey, which is really great in the work, we do a lot of different comprehensive plans, that's a great showing from the community, so really great to have had all of those participants providing their feedback. We also had in-person open house, it was one of the biggest open houses I personally have ever been to, it was, I think there were well over 200 participants, we had 200 and something on our key counter, but we didn't even get everyone, so it was a really great event. We also followed those with some self-paced responses at the library, rec center, senior recreation and senior center, and the chamber of commerce, so people could engage with some of the boards that were at the open house in the kind of their own time. So all in all, we were so happy with the communities showing for this round of engagement. Just showing you some of the materials that were presented, we had, the survey was noticed on the Engage Lewisville website, there were postcard mailers that were direct mailed to residents, flyers with QR codes were posted around the community, information was published in the Spring Community Update and monthly newsletters, we had thousands of emails directly to residents through city lift serves, as well as the Chamber of Commerce lift serve, and this survey was available both in English and in Spanish, so a pretty broad showing of communications to try and get the word out, which I think resulted in that really high showing for those engagement events. Here's just some photos from the event, hopefully maybe some of you were there, it was really great, and we just really enjoyed getting to chat with so many different Lewisville residents. Ooh, that was a video, huh? And so, I'm going to show just a few quick highlights, the engagement summary that was shared with you at a past meeting was pretty substantive, I think it was well over 100 pages of comments, but I'm going to extract some of the things that I think are really important for framing the vision and values. And so, one of these is the top 10 words, and these really indicate this sense of safety, small, friendly community, which are really important to the residents of Lewisville. There's also some sub-themes around attention in the community, especially when looking towards the future, around growth and change, in contrast to kind of a perceived pace of slower growth. We also did some really fun mapping exercises, we had this both online and in person, and overall, there's an increased desire for retail, restaurant, and entertainment along these main corridors, as well as some support for multifamily type homes. There's a huge desire in the community for increased gathering spaces, such as parks, some plazas, you'll see that reflected in the values, and as well as more dedicated open space and parklands, so that sense of outdoor community really is important. And then there's also interest in some affordable housing and environmental sustainability. Taking a look at both transportation, mobility, and open space, key components of a comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan's really being a driver of land use, but recognizing that there's all these other elements at play, including services, transportation corridors, open space, and recreation spaces, all of it really comes together to fit together the pieces of the puzzle of your community. So looking at transportation and mobility, trails, crossings, and bike lanes are really at the top of the list for what people would like to see more of. And when it comes to open space, that mitigation of natural lands and preserving open spaces also came very high to the top. I'll add, in other questions, hazard mitigation and hazard resilience also was kind of an important driver. And so, just some key takeaways from this is that there's kind of this idea of balancing small-town character and future development that came out of the conversations, that people really cared deeply about the town's small-town character, and that sense of community and togetherness, and so, future development should look to support and bring people together, rather than be kind of veering from what the community character currently is. We also identified that those core values from the 2013 plan are still really important to the community, but there might be some additions and revisions to those as we think about moving forward. One of the things not in the 2013 plan is this idea of housing affordability and diversity from the future, given that the economy and the, you know, the landscape looked very different in 2013, and today's economy is, that housing crisis is really critical to the future residents of Lewisville, and so, affordable housing for people of all ages, I think that's an important thing to point out, is the kind of that age diversity is a key driver. And then, without question, downtown is the heart, people love downtown Lewisville, and this really needs to be part of the big picture when it comes to increasing vibrancy of retail businesses, and a place to bring people together-together. So, with that, there's a lot of words, such as like small-town, and safe, and vibrant, that we wanted to better understand what the community meant when they shared that with us. And so, based on what we heard from what we're calling in community engagement one, we went out with this kind of interim engagement 1.5, and these were more intercept-type events in local parks and trails that were really meant to capture foot traffic in places where people are already gathering. And so, these intercept events were really successful, there were over 200 participants, staff was at the street fair, concert series, Bike to Work Day, they went out to a couple different trailheads, and then we also had online, the same questions, similar questions online, that had over 40 participants. And so, this was included in your packet, it kind of looks like the next version, version 1.5, of community engagement summary, and has some additional kind of key findings that I'm going to share with you. So, we asked about what does safe, welcoming, inclusive, and supportive mean to you, and so, we have, we got some strong understanding of what that meant, as well as vibrant commercial areas, and development that maintains or enhances the unique quality of life. So, overall, we just got some really great feedback, and really dug deep into what does the community mean, and what is important to them for the future. So, based on all of this engagement, which has really been six months of process, and robust vetting, multiple iterations of both the vision and core values, we're really excited to share this final draft with you that was in your packet, and are hoping for your affirmation, as Jeff has said, as we move into the next stages of plan, plan and plan drafting. So, we have on the screen here the inverted triangle, the top being kind of broad and overarching, and it narrowing in focus as we get down towards implementation, which will be part of the plan. So today, we're sharing the orange, the yellow, and the green pieces, which are still kind of pretty broad, but keep in mind that these will start to inform those strategies and actions, which is really going to be a lot of the meat of what goes into the comprehensive plan, so that's where we're headed. And this vision is really an overarching aspirational statement that talks about who does Lewisville community want to be, who do they want to be when they grow up, what do you want to be in 10 years? And that sets a framework, an aspiration for us to reach to, and that's kind of overarching. Then we have these core values, and a core value is kind of like a guidepost, it's what guides us as we make these decisions, it's really a lens that you can look through to ensure that decision-making is in alignment with your values, and who Lewisville sees them, you know, who they see themselves as. And then, we're going to share with you some themes and focus areas, and these are still pretty preliminary, but each of these core values starts to get a little bit more refined, and these themes and focus areas start to provide a little bit more clarity around what these different core values might mean, and how they might inform the plan as we move So with this, I have the vision statement that we have settled upon, this vision for what Lewisville hopes to be in five to 10 years, it really honors the current community, but is also forward-looking towards the shared future. So, I'll read it out, "Lewisville is committed to being an equitable, resilient, and sustainable community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive now and for future generations. We welcome a vibrant future where Lewisville will evolve and adapt to change in a way that respects our past and supports our high quality of life." And I want to point out the words equitable, resilient, and sustainable, as well as thrive and vibrant, I think these are words that came directly from the community and from all of you, and were really important that they become part of this vision statement for the future. As we kind of dive into the next level, imagining we're kind of moving from our, the top of our triangle, one down on the level, we have these six themes and core values, so the theme is in bold, it's kind of the name, and the core value is the statement. And I won't read through each one of these, and they are in your packet, but we have community character, community connectivity, environmental sustainability, a vibrant economy, community places, and civic leadership. And each one of these are supported by a statement, that core value of what it means. And so, we have this diagram here, equitable, resilient, sustainable, and vibrant, come directly from your vision statement, and they're really at the core of what this kind of elaborated Venn diagram represents. And surrounding it are these core values, and so, at the center, we have that vision, and around the edges, we have these different core values, they are equally weighted, thus the circle, none is higher than the other, but equitable, resilient, and sustainable is really part of each one of these. And I'm going to spend just a moment looking a little deeper into each of these six values, because they're fairly, they're still rather broad in what they mean, but these sub-themes provide a little bit more detail. These sub-themes will also probably start to be developed into goal areas for the comprehensive plan, we've called them focus areas in your document, they're not quite yet goal statements, but are starting to guide us in the direction for what ultimately the plan goals will start to include. So, from community character, we recognize that that involves things like public safety, resilience and adaptation, jobs and housing, and this idea of community heritage and community identity, so really, all of those things that make Lewisville a really great place to live, that character, that small-town feel that people love, these are part of that story. When it comes to connectivity, it's both physical connectivity as well as social connectivity, so multimodal transportation, housing diversification, and community facilities, so opportunities to bring people together. Environmental sustainability is focused on the environment, everything from hazard mitigation to equitable resilience, decarbonization, and ensuring open space and habitats, just once again, this came out very prevalent as a very important piece of the community for what people love about Lewisville. And moving into our next set, we have economic vibrancy, this starts to tie to that downtown is the heart, and that people have a really great desire for gathering spaces and public realm, but also recognizing there's things like South Boulder Road, McHaslam Boulevard, CTC, that are also part of this economic story, and all of those really have to work together to support the jobs and housing balance in the community. Then we have community places, and so, this is more of your recreational assets, both physical and outdoor, so things like your wonderful recreation and senior center, but also ensuring that parks and open spaces have accessibility, and that we're thinking about conservation, restoration, and preservation of those spaces for the future. And finally, we have civic leadership, and really within that is recognizing the role that the city plays in providing core community services, communicating to the public in a way that is transparent and inclusive, and also recognizing the role they play in a regional scale, ensuring IGAs and partnerships with surrounding communities in the county maintain intact. So, with that, I will pause here, I'd love to hear some discussion and feedback, reflections you have for us based on what we've shared, and provide the opportunity to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Allison, and I think as we discuss it moving forward, what I would aim for is just kind of general consensus on, do we feel it's appropriate? So, if anybody has things that they feel are missing, or if you just want to highlight a few things that you love, that's also welcome, so.
Chair, I have a couple things. Allison, I appreciate the work that you guys have put into this, it is a good overall document, the work product that you guys have put together is a pretty Herculean effort, and...
A little closer to the microphone.
Sorry, how about that? Better?
I think so.
Okay. So, I was just saying, thank you for the work you put into this, Allison, and also to staff, I know everybody's done a lot on this to get to this point. Just a couple of comments, I think in general, I do like how the vision statement and the core values have come out. I provide some comments here to be constructive and, and to not try to wordsmith or let perfect be the enemy of good. I think when we talked about some of the original input towards the vision statement, we had even referenced the, the writing that was up on the wall here in chambers, and to that point, in the vision statement, there's one sentence in there that I would maybe ask for a consideration of just a very minor tweak, so the last sentence that says, well, and I preface this by saying, right, you noted, Allison, that the, the vision statement, a vision statement is aspirational, right, it is intended to be future-looking and, and potentially unachievable, right, because it's kind of always what's next. The second sentence in the vision statement that says, "We welcome a vibrant future where Lewisville will evolve and adapt to change," then it says, "in a way that respects our past and supports our high quality of life." I'm not sure that there is a way, just a single way, that we can be committed to an equitable, resilient, and sustainable community, right, for the future, I think there are lots of ways that respect our past and support our high quality of life, and so, maybe that would be one request that I would, would make, just to wordsmith that again, very slightly, just to say, hey, it's, it's aspirational, it's, it's future-looking, we know that there, you know, are things that are going to come five years from now that we don't know of or can't contemplate right now, and so, there are many ways that we can do that. In the core values, I think that all six of them as written are great, and again, one just comment that I would, I would ask for consideration would be in the very first one for community character, that we value a balanced approach to development that maintains and enhances our community character, as opposed to or enhances, I don't think that those need to be mutually exclusive, and when we go back to what's written on the wall, the mission, our commitment is to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life in our community, I do think that that is a, an important one to change from an or to an and statement. So, those are my thoughts.
Great.
Thank you, great comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Troy, Commissioner Mahaly.
I agree with Commissioner Troy's comments, and so, also looking at the last sentence of the vision statement, there's something that struck me when I first read it, that I'm, that I'm still coming back to, and I wanted to see if others felt the same way, and it's the "we welcome" part, I like what comes after that in the sentence, a vibrant future, you know, and I agree with Commissioner Troy's point about a way, you know, maybe we could just change it to change while respecting our pasts, but in regards to the "we welcome," every time I read that, it, it comes off as passive to me, and, and in particular, I think this sort of vision statement, you know, the even, I think in the thing it even said, you know, it answers the question, what do we strive for? And welcoming something that, to me, when I read that, it's not exactly, you're not striving for it, you're, you're welcome to it happening, if it, if it were to happen, it would be great, so I, I feel like we should change the verb there to have something be more proactive, and at least, that's what I keep coming, yeah, you could even say, we strive, or we are, the word up on the wall is dedicated, we are dedicated to, but something to show intent by the community and the leadership here, I think, would be a worthwhile change to consider, and I wanted to see if others felt the same way.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, yeah, very much like that.
And, and I would just echo, that might trickle into some of the value, like the value statements, there was one in particular about climate action or something where it's like, we value climate action, again, can we say something more than we value it, like we're, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out, we're committed to taking climate action, or, anyway, just another one for me that sort of falls into this, I mean, I realize we're talking about values, but can it be a bit more active the way this is worded? Anyway, just throwing that out.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunt.
So I would just, on that point, I, I would just caution, maybe a little careful about trying to change that kind of wording, the value wording, because we'll have, I think to Allison's point, we'll have points later where there's going to be action.
Yeah.
So, that would be my only comment there, I just wanted to say, I think I agree with what Commissioner Troy and Commissioner Mahaly have said so far, and I think, other than that, I think these are, I just want to thank again, thank the staff and Allison's team for this great work, I think this is going to be a great thing to build on.
Commissioner Moline, bouncing back, so right, with each of them beginning with that statement, we value, we value, and it being the value section, what are you thinking on that, how strong of a gut feeling is that for you?
Commissioner Hunt's comments are well, well-taken, I mean, I appreciate that, and that we'll be getting to kind of action in these later stages, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm happy with where we're at, if somebody came up with a way to make it sound just a little more active, I'd also be happy with that, but...
Commissioner Hunt's comments are well-taken. I mean, I appreciate that and that we'll be getting to kind of action in these later stages. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm happy with where we're at. If somebody came up with a way to make it sound just a little more active, I'd also be happy with that. But I'm not ready to do anything rash, let's just say.
Okay, great. Commissioner Bangs, you can chime in at any point. Commissioner Choi? Any other?
I have a couple more, I have a couple of questions when my time comes around again.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Your time has arrived. Commissioner.
Oh, for me? Oh, okay. Thanks very much, Allison. I appreciate this and thanks for the other comments that commissioners have shared so far. I sort of have two questions. And one of them is, again, sort of looking at where we're going to be heading to next. It feels like we have, and from the community comments, we received a lot of information where I feel like our community expresses their appreciation for experiences and values, again, values that they share and things that they do, the street fair, the Friday night concerts, those kinds of things. I'd be interested in hearing how we're going to take those kinds of comments about experiences and how those are going to help inform us in a way that's going to work to develop kind of a town plan in response to that. And so that's sort of one kind of question I'd love to hear us discuss a little bit. And then the other one is, is what happens when these values conflict? And do we want to, is that something that the plan needs to kind of address? Or how do we, how do we approach that? Because I can see, for example, somebody coming, and I think this has happened before us in items that have come before the planning commission previously, where somebody says, well, we're a community that values a vibrant economy, so therefore we should approve this. And then somebody else says, well, yeah, but we also value environmental sustainability, so therefore this shouldn't happen. And I just wonder, is this, is there something in the plan that describes what happens when those, when values inevitably conflict? So those are my two kind of questions for you, Allison, and others.
Great, thanks. Maybe, Allison, if you can address that last question?
Certainly. I've got both written down. So we can start with where values conflict. I'm so excited you asked that because that's where we're headed.
Yeah.
We will share a little bit more about this once we kind of talk through vision and values. But you're right. Oftentimes, we see in comprehensive plans that our values are in conflict, or there's some tension between those things. There's a push and pull. And so where we're headed is this idea, is what we call scenario planning. And it really looks at different alternatives of if we, if we focus on this, there's a trade-off with this. If we focus on this, there's a trade-off with this. And that scenario planning is intended to engage the community in a dialogue of what's most important, to help understand from them, well, we really want housing, and we really want housing affordability, but we don't want to affect our open spaces. And so the trade-off with that is looking at housing typologies that take up less space so that you can preserve more open space. That's just one example. And so, and then we're already working internally and with staff on what this scenario planning starts to be. We'll be looking at three different alternative futures, and each one of those has a different way that those tensions might play out. And it's an opportunity for us to kind of learn, engage from the community, what really matters when you have to play with the scales, so to speak, that balance of those different things that are important to us. And ultimately, what happens with scenario planning is it leads us to a future land use map or an F L U M, which is a critical component of any comprehensive plan. So those scenarios, we mostly see it ends up being kind of a combination of all three futures. We take the best pieces of each, and ultimately, that ends up becoming, informing the future land use map. That will be one of the next times we are in front of you is to discuss that future land use map, to discuss the outcomes of what we heard from scenario planning with the community. So it's a great question.
Thanks, and that was a great answer. I really appreciate that. I think I am hopeful as well that scenario planning will help people realize that we can't, we can't always just have all of these six values every single time there are going to have to be some trade-offs. So anyway, thank you, I appreciate that.
And to your second question, I'm going to go back here. I didn't include it in this document, but when it comes to kind of those experiential things, those values-based, when we get into strategies and actions, those are usually things like policies, plans, programs, and projects, all keys. And so those strategies start to get a little bit more detailed. It is a comprehensive plan, so it's still pretty high-level, but it can make recommendations like, and I don't want to like make a recommendation that, I don't want to give you an example because I don't know what they are yet. We need to know what that future desired condition from the community is before we can draft those recommendations of what they are. But that's where you can start to get a little bit more specific about different ways to promote and support different experiences. It might not be creating, you know, around a specific event. That's for whoever's responsibility is for that specific event, but it can help to support that value for the future.
Yeah. I get, it's sort of like it's, I can see it being easier to get community members, myself included, excited about community programming as opposed to what the layout of, you know, the town might be. You know, people are just sort of drawn to those more kind of active, high-interest sorts of topics.
No, I totally agree. Back to the point where, Allison, if you can jump back to the, to the six, yeah, there we go. Right, so where it says community places, we value community places, but really, what we value is the informal and formal events that take place in those places. So those places, without anything going on, really aren't community.
But they facilitate.
Right.
Prioritizing them will facilitate the ability to have those events.
Right. So as long as we're comfortable with it there, Commissioner Moline, do you think, I mean, do we need to speak to events in this value? Or are we okay with it being places?
I like it being places myself, so.
Okay, great.
And just to throw in there.
Thanks, everybody, for letting me ask those questions. Appreciate it.
And I think maybe this is good, but I just wanted to point this out. Because it's worded in such the way that I think it highlights a lot of the things that we all agree are important to the community, but even talking about like events and places to facilitate the events, and it's also sort of split into the community connectivity part, you know? Because when I read community connectivity, that to me means both like, you know, literal trails and roads, but also, you know, events where we can come together and connect as a community. So I kind of like the way it's worded because you can, you can take things you know you love about this community and it fits in a few, a lot of things fit in more than one bucket, is the point.
Right. And I was thinking, as I was watching, listening to the presentation, that affordable housing, I mean, I guess it fits in connectivity, and I think it also fits in some other places. It's kind of hard to know where that, exactly where that's the best, the best place is to put that. I'm happy where it is. It could also go into vibrant economy in some ways.
Yeah, definitely.
If I can jump in, I think as we start writing goal statements, those will become more clear, and we will certainly be at a point in the process where we can move those things around.
Great. Commissioner Basket.
Thank you. So I really like the way everything's coming together with the plan so far, and my comments are in the interest of adding value rather than being critical. So I have a little bit of trouble with the first two statements in that community character, we're ascribing development as character. And I know that's an important hot button, that that's probably fundamental struggle that we're going to have in this city is around development, but it, I'm a little uncomfortable with it being the only thing under community character because there's so much more in terms of, it's a nice place to live, it's a place where neighborhoods are strong, it's a place where people know their neighbors. So I'm not, I'm not sure what can be done about that. I.
It's almost as if you could just take out those balanced approach to development. We value, we value maintaining our, and enhancing our community character or something, right?
That is kind of where I'm headed.
This one, I feel you on the terminology. It's really about the physical, physical changes to the city. So that could be development on private land, on public land, infrastructure improvements. The intent, I think, you know, we could broaden it, but I think the intent originally was physical changes for what it's worth here.
Well, so then maybe the words community character are not the perfect words to have at the top of that. Because, right, community character is small town, right?
I'll just, I feel like we're getting at that, the community character in all of these in a lot of ways. When you're talking about our, our small town feel, which, as Commissioner Haley has pointed out, it's really hard to quantify or really define, but I get what you're saying about the physical aspect of it. And I think, I see that, you know, development is going to, one way or another, is going to determine the physical character of the community. I almost feel like, that's another place, I'm going to sound like a broken record, where affordable housing or diversified housing kind of goes in there as well. That will affect the community's character, not just development, but the kinds of housing that we are prioritizing if we're talking about the physical outlines. I don't want to throw monkey wrenches in everything because I honestly think where we put these things may, as Allison said, may change as we come up with better strategies or more clear strategies, but I think all the pieces are there.
Can I ask a question real quick? So in fact, let's play a game. Everybody, close your eyes. Right, and I'm going to read this. "We value a balanced approach to development that maintains or enhances our community character." You can open your eyes for a second. Now, Commissioner Basket, I think the word that stood out to you was development.
Correct.
Right, that's the one that you heard that was the theme of that whole statement. What we're hearing from staff is that, you know, that, that value is intended to encapsulate all of the things that our community is experiencing in terms of growth and evolution and change, but we want to do it in a way that maintains that community character that everybody in town probably defines slightly different based on what you value and how you see it and what you experience and what you do and what your goals are. So now, everybody, close your eyes again, right? And I'm going to say, "We value balanced, we value balanced approaches and priorities that maintain and enhance our community character." Right? Because we're still talking about priorities in terms of, are we growing? Are we redeveloping? Are we supporting public or private development? Are we doing some of those things, right? And it, and it just replaces the objectionable word for some folks of development, right, with the meaning potentially from the city's perspective of saying, we have a lot of priorities that we have to account for, knowing that there are diverse perspectives and different people, right? And we want to do all of that stuff in ways, right, that enhance our community character, that maintain and enhance our community character. If, if the word development was slightly tweaked to maybe be more indicative of what staff was trying to get to in terms of the objectives, knowing that it is inclusive of development, does that still strike?
I have another direction to propose, and we'll come back around to what all our ideas are. If community character, say, we value a balanced approach to change that maintains or enhances our community character, it just seems less loaded to me and changes what people are afraid of. People are afraid of development, they're afraid of change, but I think that change might acknowledge it more.
Yeah, I mean, to the point where development is almost a loaded term, it for many people kind of triggers. And when you increase that definition to include city-owned infrastructure and that sort of thing, yeah, we know that all falls under development, but huh.
I like the juxtaposition of the idea, right, and the inevitability of change with the sentiment that it, with that change, we have the ability to maintain and enhance, right? Change, maintain, right, potentially contradictory, but when you juxtapose them together and you reinforce it with the idea that it's going to enhance our community character is nice.
Could you repeat your suggestion, Commissioner Choi, again?
I think it's something to the effect of, we value balanced approaches and priorities that maintain and enhance our community character, something like that.
Or we value a balanced approach to change that maintains or and enhances our community character. Or you just sub the word changed.
Right, for development.
Arguably, you could remove the word maintains. I mean, if this is somewhat aspirational, we should be in pursuit of enhancement.
I think there's plenty of people around who feel like we've arrived and we don't want to change anything because it's great the way it is. So I think their concerns would be, they would probably hang their hat on maintains, but I'm guessing that's kind of why it's shown up there at this point in time? I don't know. What do others think?
Yeah, I think it's a good nod to our ability to move forward based on where we've been without being stuck in it, right? You look at the sign on the corner that isn't the Blue Parrot sign anymore, but it still gives a nod to the Blue Parrot sign. That's kind of that maintains, in my opinion.
Jeff or Allison, I'm curious on your thoughts of the word change in place of development or any of the other proposals.
I like change a lot because it is more inclusive than development. Change can include the physical aspects of the city, but there's also social aspects that are woven into here as well that it becomes more inclusive of. So I like all the suggestions. I think these are great, but I like change. Allison, what do you think?
I agree. I like change. I think that's directly, from knowing the community engagement comments very well, I think that is most closely linked to where this value came from.
What are other things people think on this point in particular with subbing the word change for development?
I'm happy with that.
I think Commissioner.
Yes, I think it's a good call. Makes sense.
Winner, winner. As long as we also include and between maintain and enhances.
So I have for this one, we'll revise it too. We value a balanced approach to change that maintains and enhances our community character.
Great.
Yeah, Commissioner Basket called it, development is a contentious, somewhat inflammatory term.
I agree. I think change will also, to her point, will be another trigger word for some folks, but I think by maintaining the word maintains in the statement, I think is key to addressing that.
Great. All right. Yes, Commissioner Basket.
I don't have comments on all of the values, just on the second one now. On community connectivity, I would point to the little icon graphic thing that shows people with a heart and an overarching thing that we're together. I'm struggling that we don't have enough words there. So I want a word that has to do with neighbors and knowing our neighbors. We value an inclusive and connected community where people know their neighbors and can live and flourish. Just something to make it a little softer there.
I like that idea. Allison, do you have any knee-jerk reactions on that one?
No, I think it's a great suggestion.
So just work neighboring or neighbors in there somehow.
Well, so I think part of it is that it's, I mean, connected community is kind of a little bit jargon-y perhaps, not really. Not really, but slightly, whereas neighbor.
Connected community could be.
It could mean a number of things. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, to me, that's what I sort of get when I, when I read connected community. That's what I'm, that's what I am thinking of, but I, I see your point. I do like that it's concise. I'm not opposed, yeah, I'm not opposed to a change, yeah.
Not either. I think Commissioner Basket's suggestions to add anymore, people know their neighbors, is a nice one.
So inclusive and connected community where neighbors know each other and all can live and flourish? Maybe.
Yeah. What about, "We value knowing our neighbors, comma, an inclusive and connected community where all can flourish?"
Yeah.
That's fine. Gets at what I'm looking for.
Put it up at the top. Nice. All right.
Just a question, everybody. It sounded like there were maybe different interpretations about what connected meant in this. It can, and I, and I just wonder if there's any more consensus on what this value means if instead of connected it said interconnected?
Oh, huh. I like it.
Allison, would you mind going back to the six? Sorry.
It's almost like community connectivity has been blurred with community character somewhat, if you go back to that other slide that Allison just showed.
Right, so here.
I like the word interconnected, well, because connected does, does speak to our phones and our, our Wi-Fi and all that stuff. Interconnected, I think, pulls away from that a little bit. Is that your thought?
If I could jump in, I would frame it as the community character to, to your comment. The community character is about physical connectivity, the physical planning of the city, where community connectivity is about social networks.
Right.
And I think that there's probably, with that lens, some moving around of those subthemes so that we put physical elements and community character and social elements and community connectivity.
And then does, does the word interconnected versus the word connected, I, I don't think it actually has that big of a difference in definition at that point in time, but I think it just steers us away from thinking, you know, connected means I'm on my phone. Yeah, right. Anybody else have thoughts on interconnected?
I, I have a little bit more, so, based on what you just said, Allison. I, I like the word social network because that to me starts to separate it from any of the other things we might think of. So what if we said something like, "We value a social network that is inclusive and connected where all can live and flourish."
With our neighbor.
With our neighbors.
At the beginning.
I lost the neighbor piece.
Right, we lost, inserting that back in at the beginning.
How about, "We value a social network," or a, no.
Yeah, that's too.
That, that's, never mind.
If the know your neighbors piece is the important piece, I think where all can flourish could probably go. "We value knowing our neighbors through a social network that is inclusive and connected."
And interconnected?
And interconnected.
Can you say that one more time? I think you got it.
"We value knowing our neighbors through a social network that is inclusive and interconnected."
I like it.
Yeah.
That's good. I think Commissioner Moline would rather have it say, "We actively value," or not, no, I'm just, no, we're good.
That's what happens when you're virtual. We can pick on you more easily. Commissioners Moline, do you have any other thoughts on this? Commissioner?
No, yeah, no, I, I appreciate the, I appreciate the conversation. I would, the more I'm looking at this slide, I, I keep on thinking about the repetition of, "We value," and could we make the statements more concise by just saying, you know, vibrant commercial areas that support the community, for example. Does that, does that bring it up? Does that kind of have more of an impact than reiterating, "We value all of these"? But that's, 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 I'm not hung up about it, so, anyway. That's what, that's what I'm currently thinking about.
Well, I, I can understand where you're coming from. I get that.
Commissioner Haley.
Getting to, you know, borderline pedantic wordsmithing, you know. The sentence that I think I just captured that I, that I think I heard Allison say was, "We value knowing our neighbors through a social network that is inclusive and interconnected." I still think the word community belongs in there somewhere. Because social network to some is Facebook, right? And I'm sure that that'll be pointed out at some point, right? And so, and I don't think that's what we mean, right? And so, could we make, yeah, social community is what I, was where I was thinking. I mean, I think, I think we're on the right track, but I, I, I think I have issue with the word social network, and I think I know what we're getting at, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure that those are the right terms, yeah.
Did I hear, change it to community network?
Yeah, that would be good.
"We value knowing our neighbors through a community network that is inclusive and interconnected."
I think that hits the, the nail on the head.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else feeling good about it?
So, if I could chime in really quick, to, to put out a scenario, so we're, the, the word, the wording makes sense, but some of the categories in community connectivity are about physical changes to the city. So like housing diversification and the subthemes, you know, like subtopics or whatever, housing diversification and transportation connectivity, lived or live in community connectivity. So is that, if, if my question makes sense, does that mean that those types of things switch over to community character? So transportation connections, yeah, this is what I'm referring to. Not to muddy the waters, but just to make sure we understand the, yeah.
Yeah, no, because I heard Allison say yes, that infrastructure is in that first one and that social is in the second one, and so maybe.
I think it's, yeah. Jeff, I think it's just flip-flopping a few of these.
It's what?
I think we can flip-flop a few of these.
Yeah, I see your notes. I'm processing.
Multimodal transportation goes under community character if we're saying that's infrastructure. Sorry.
Right, yeah. Okay. Yeah, does that work? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
So in principle, yes, but does that?
Does that work for you?
Or Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
What's that, Commissioner?
So, so in principle, yes, this is fine with me, but does this change the wording or the, the things that we need to say in the community character? I think it's a statement or whatever the, yeah.
We're going back to what we were just looking at? Well, no, I think we've kind, I think this is an important point where we've created kind of a bright line difference between these two, and so we want infrastructure, physical facilities in one, and social and, and community connectivity, so.
I don't think that if we move the physical stuff into the community character, I still think we, our statement there makes sense.
I, I agree. It's just, it's just, we don't need to say, "This includes roads," in order for it to include roads, yeah.
Because these are just really broad-based statements, and I, and I'll, also, I do like, I, I hear Commissioner Moline's point, point about, "We value, we value." As somebody who writes for a living, I do think there's a, there is a value. There is a, there is a kind of a rhetorical device where you repeat this thing, it, you know, it, it, it serves a purpose. In this particular context, I kind, I like it.
So I'm lost. So with all the changes that we discussed, are we okay with where we're at? Yeah, okay.
I, I am on this. I just have one other comment on the memorandum itself when we get to environmental sustainability.
Okay, just a moment. Are we ready? Yeah, we'll wrap this one up then. Did you have a final?
I just wanted to recap that we would shift around the things as you showed them, Allison, with your graphic. That would be great. Thank you.
Yep.
Great, thanks. Moving in then, Commissioner Banks, environmental sustainability.
Yeah, I, I think we're all sensitive and hesitant to wordsmith this to death, but what triggered me was in your earlier slide, Allison, the core value slide, a deeper look, the first one of those, if you could go to that. Yeah, environmental sustainability, the, the equitable resilience and adaptation. I went back to the memorandum because I didn't quite understand what that really meant. And if you go to page four of your memorandum, which is page 29 of the packet, I'm hung up on.
I lost, so.
I did too.
Okay.
Commissioner Banks, you may have muted yourself by mistake, or actually, it sounds like there could have been a very loud announcement, perhaps, that you were saving us all from having to listen to. Do appreciate you joining us virtually, which I'm guessing is slowing down your transit time.
Here we go. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that, yeah. Apparently you can't scroll through a document and use the spacebar to unmute at the same time. So, yeah, on page 29, under environmental sustainability in the section that talks about equitable resilience and adaptation, it states that we will develop and implement strategies to support all of Louisville, and then it says, "Especially vulnerable and underserved populations in withstanding and adapting to climate impacts." Now, I'm sure the vast majority of the population won't get that far down into this document, but, but what do we mean by especially? Because it calls out that we're going to treat a subset of the, of the community differently for some particular reason.
I might, I might defer to Jeff on this question, because I know he met with the sustainable, with your staff, sustainability staff in order to refine this and make sure that it works with internal sustainability teams' objectives. So Jeff, you want to take this one?
Yeah, yeah, and this came directly from our sustainability manager. And so, you know, honestly, I would need to pick her brain on exactly what she means. I could speculate on specific examples, but, you know, we could clean this up and tighten this up a bit. This, this, this isn't part of your decision tonight, for example. It's sort of below core values, but, you know, we could certainly clarify and maybe tighten that up a bit. So don't have a good answer for you. It's a good question.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Other thoughts on our, on our six values? We comfortable with where we're at? Yeah? All right. Commissioner Banks, Commissioner Moline, I'm guessing you're also comfortable at this point?
I, I would just say that, for me, for the, the way my personality works, I guess, is I like seeing the, the deeper, I can't remember the slide you just had up. That descrip, yes, that, those kind of bullet points, I guess you'd say, in each of those kind of speaks to, to me. It helps me understand those values a little better than the statements, which is why I'm, I'm, you know, maybe it doesn't seem like it, but I'm, I'm very happy with where the statements are and, and I'm very happy with the discussion, and, and those are very important. But just the way my personality works, seeing these bullet points in each of these values helps me understand them better, so I, I really value this. So, anyway, I'll, I'll stop there.
No, that's great. Thank you. Commissioner Banks, any last thoughts that you want to share?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right then, Allison, anything more that you are looking for from us?
Um, I, I feel, I, I would like to share some next steps with all of you, but I look to you, Mr. Chairman, to kind of let me know what you need from me if you want to and discuss this or make any commission-based.
No, I mean, I think we're at a.
Affirmations. I know it's not a formal approval.
Consensus of affirmation with the changes that we've noted. And I'm comfortable with moving forward with it. Oh, yes, Commissioner Haley.
So I really liked the wordsmithing we did on the second one, the community connectivity one. So can you read back your notes, what you had? Or I, I think I have it here, so.
I have, we value, I'll go back to all of them. "We value knowing our neighbors through a community network that is inclusive and interconnected." That's for community connectivity. And for community character, "We value a balanced approach to change that maintains and enhances our community character."
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks for clarifying that. All right, great. Yeah, no, I think then we have general consensus that we like it and you should move forward with it.
Great. Well, thank you all for the really great suggestions.
Sorry, one other.
I just had a positive comment to make that I, I see a difference in the language. You had the comment from the one counselor at the county, city council meeting that the language was a little archaic, and I think that you've really improved upon that. So kudos to freshening it up.
Great, thank you. All right then, go ahead, Allison.
Would you like me to talk through next steps?
Yeah.
Great. Well, with this affirmation, we'll also be going to council to get their feedback at the end of the month. But this is really important because now having an understanding of kind of the upper portions of the triangle, we get to really dig deeper into some of the detailed pieces of what will be plan content. So as I mentioned, well, so with the plan, starting here, to support as we move into a draft plan, we're hoping to be, we've got about nine months or so to develop a plan, and we have a preliminary table of contents. This will evolve based on discussions, based on feedback from the community, but starting to think about moving into plan production and thinking about ultimately how we communicate this in a way that is clear, concise, and action-focused. We also want something, to be clear, concise, and action-focused, we want something that is graphically engaging and easy to understand. So we've developed a style guide and a template. You've seen these colors before. We developed them early on in the process, so all of the materials we produce really look good together. And we've got this, this set of colors, this set of typology that we've been using, and we will ensure that all of this meets the accessibility requirements for compliance so that things are, everything is accessible on the web. All of the memos that we've been sharing, from the plan reviews to this memo that you received in your packet today, all of this is part of that plan content. You'll see bits and pieces of these begin to be populated in the plans that ultimately, when you start to see draft and final versions of the plan, a lot of this looks familiar, and that's the intent, is that you're seeing things evolve along the way and that ultimately, they be, the plan becomes a storytelling document really reflecting the information shared throughout the process. And this is the really exciting stuff. So we will be moving into our next round of community engagement, which is community choices. And so this is that conversation that I mentioned earlier on scenario planning. And so our approach to scenario planning for this project is really using those vision and values as a lens, but starting to think about the physical planning of land uses within the community. So to start this process, we've developed this areas of stability and areas of change map. This map, it's important to highlight that not all areas of the city will be planned in quite the same way. There are some areas, such as open space and established neighborhoods, that are unlikely to change in the next 10 years. There's other parts of the communities, such as retail corridors, undeveloped or vacant parcels, that have more opportunity to direct and guide future growth. So we're calling, excuse me, we're calling these areas of opportunities, and they're really going to be the focus of our scenario planning. So you can see on this map, we have areas in red that are the Marshall Fire. So you can see on this map, we have areas in red that are the Marshall Fire. We have areas in orange that are vacant properties. We have areas of green, which is either no open space or kind of existing neighborhoods. And then we have these areas highlighted in yellow, which is McHaslam Boulevard and Coal Creek, Red Hill Ridge, South Boulder Road, and Highway 42 in downtown. And this will be the areas of focus for that scenario planning. And so we'll be back in the community with some really big maps and some stickers and asking them to engage in an exercise with us where they have to play with those trade-offs. So right now, we're working with staff on what those three different scenarios are. There will likely be a kind of a business as usual or baseline condition where current trends kind of continue as they are. And then two different approaches for how to think about that potential future. So we're working with staff to determine what those scenarios are. But all of that, there'll basically be kind of these three different alternatives, and the community has to play around with stickers on the map to try and figure out how do they manage the push and pull. So these are some of the questions that we might ask is we'll share these different scenarios. We'll do this kind of engagement exercise, and then we'll ask the community to kind of think about these different scenarios in different ways. And this is all intended to really explore those trade-offs and what can help support those values moving forward. So more to come on this as we continue to refine this discussion with staff. I anticipate this will be part of your next update at next month's planning commission meeting. And we are looking at an event in late October, and we hope that you'll be able to join us there.
Hey, Allison, just two quick points. Sorry, before you move on, it may just be my angle or the projector, but the red and the orange on the map were almost indecipherable for me. And if those are going to get printed up in large format, you may want to consider either changing the angle of one of them or using something other than just the diagonal hashing.
Yeah, and this is not the map that we'll be doing scenario planning on. Those will be much larger. They'll have actual land uses. This is our opportunities and constraints map, essentially, understanding kind of the overlay of the different areas of change. So ultimately, the base maps that the community does exercises with will look very different than this one.
Okay.
I'm also wondering, I would tend to separate Highway 42 in downtown as different areas of opportunity. I don't know that we always see them as.
Maybe we want to.
Perhaps.
They're so close.
They're close. They're connected. They touch each other. But they're different. And ultimately, there's a ton of different jurisdictions involved in Highway 42 as opposed to downtown, so. And then also, I'm questioning lumping McHaslam Boulevard and Coal Creek together. I'm not even sure precisely what is Coal Creek referred to.
That is, I'm sorry, I'm going to change the spelling.
You're saying Coal Creel?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, Coal Creel. There we go. Got it, but.
Is it the Business Park south?
It's the Business Park to the north.
To the north?
Yeah, I saw that pop up somewhere else.
Sorry, Business Park where?
Yeah, which.
This here. It's, all the kind of the things in this area one. And this is based on kind of looking at vacant properties and potential future development and the corridor and recognizing there's kind of an interplay of those different dynamics.
Well, I think that area is, Jeff, do you know, I think it's more Centennial Valley. Coal, does, what's, where are you saying Coal Creek is?
Yeah, I think this is such an early version that we're going to iterate on. But, you know, I don't know. We haven't landed on these as the titles. I don't know if you need to title them. So, yeah, I don't. Centennial Valley, yeah, McHaslam Corridor. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think stating the obvious. I think if you call it Coal Creek, I don't think anyone's going to know what they're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. That's not a defined area. So if you want to figure that out for us.
Or it is, or people will think of the creek and then it, you know, in the creek corridor, and then that, that would lead to some confusion. While we're on this, I would just also caution the three-mile annexation label.
Yeah.
That, you might want to, that, I don't know, that could really be.
I would get rid of the word annexation.
Yeah, that'd be a start and then, yeah, and maybe a finish too, yeah.
So, yeah, we can call that three-mile planning area.
Yeah, there you go. Perfect.
Yeah. All right.
Allison, would you like us to start to get opinionated?
We're going to come back to you with more information on this. This was kind of a sneak peek at what's to come. And we're still, as Jeff mentioned, in early stages of the process. We wanted to let you know how we're thinking about scenario planning and recognizing that we have some work to do on our end to make sure that we're crafting a story that's clear and understandable and really focusing the scenarios on the important trade-offs within the community.
Great.
Great work.
Yeah, great work, and I think we all look forward to it continuing.
Great. Well, we will be putting a lot of this information on the website. There'll be probably some public noticing coming in the future weeks. And so stay in touch with that. And I know Jeff will be coming back to you all in a month with more information. And I'm just really grateful for your time, some very thoughtful comments. Thank you so much for some really great additional, great value adds to the values. So, and wonderful to see you all again.
Great to see you, and you're very welcome. All right, moving along then, I think we'll note that we do not have a Economic Vitality Program introduction and overview this evening. That then opens it up to planning commission comments. Anybody? Yes, Commissioner Basket?
I'm wondering if anybody went to the scenario planning that the university had for Sinabar?
I don't know that we want to discuss that here.
Okay. I just would like a report on that.
Yes.
Did staff go?
I did not, but I can get your report. I can send out an email to the group to report back on it. I'm curious myself. It was July 25th, I think it was?
Yeah, I attended. I don't know if anybody else did, much like the other.
So we're treading in dangerous waters here, actually, because they will be coming likely before us. And so we can't express any thoughts, reactions, opinions.
The only comment I would make is it was incredibly well-attended.
Well-attended, great. There's a fact. We can deal with that.
July 25th, well-attended event happened.
All right.
And I will not be sharing more information on that.
All right. Great. All right. Thank you all. Anything else? Commissioner comments? Seeing none then, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.